Welcome, everybody. I'm calling this meeting of the Somerville City Council to order. In accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2023, this meeting of the city council may be conducted via remote participation. Please note that video and audio of this meeting is being recorded and may be shown live on local access government channels and on the city of Somerville's website and will be available for future review. Will the clerk please call the roll?
This is Roll Call. Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor Strezzo.
Present.
Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Wilson.
Present.
Counselor Burnley.
Present.
Counselor Gomez-Moakad.
Present.
Counselor Kelly.
Present.
Counselor Panetta-Nufeld.
Now, we've got to wait for the process to start because we never started that process to begin with. So my biggest ask, of course, is a physical location for our unhoused population in East Somerville to make sure that we don't lose any more lives and that people get the services they need and the people who want services and want rehab and want to get their lives back, that they have an option. And that's the compassion that we can provide. It's expensive, but it's also not impossible. And that's what I'm asking for. I do also want to talk about the accountability aspect of things because there are a lot of problems in East Somerville in particular that are just unacceptable by any standards of civilization, and they have to be addressed. And I don't want to paint all unhoused people with a broad brush because we probably have hundreds of homeless people in this community, and I'm talking about less than 10 people and allowed to do things that really should not be allowed to happen. Public defecation in playgrounds and on public streets when we have porta-potties and public restrooms set up. We're hopefully getting a Portland Lou as well in the future. There's been knife fights in front of the library, street brawls, indecent exposure, public intoxication, theft, destruction of city property, trespassing, and litter. And I'm talking about the last month. I'm not talking about a historic trend. This is an escalation in the past month. And these are just unacceptable conditions for anybody to live in, whether you're homeless or whether you are housed. And as people will say, we are all neighbors regardless of whether we have a home, and we have to treat each other with respect. And if people, I know this is the unpopular thing to talk about, but it's real and it's affecting people's lives. And if people are concerned about me saying this, and I'll also add too, that I'm hearing about it from immigrant-owned businesses. I'm hearing about it from Latina families, Latino families in the community, immigrants who are afraid for their own children as well. Other homeless people who are one of the example of a knife fight in front of the library. One homeless person was chasing another homeless person, and that person is in fear of the other person. So this is, it crosses a lot of boundaries. And I know it's uncomfortable to talk about, but the two things I hope people will consider in this is, in my research and studying this, I found there's no correlation with poverty and mental health and something like litter. There's no reason, like, there's no correlation between the two. But there is a correlation between people living with litter, people living with trash, people living with violence, and the negative impact that it has on them. And I know that from my own experience, the negative impact that having these things in your environment lead. And you can even find studies where someone goes to a neighborhood, they go to a clean neighborhood and nobody litters, and then they go to another neighborhood and they drop some trash. And then the next thing you know, two people think they can drop trash, and it escalates. And these are the problems that just don't get addressed, day-to-day city issues that really need to be addressed alongside our compassionate way to address these problems. And the other thing I'd add with this problem is there are many people at Chucky Harris Park desperate for shelter. A lot of people not doing the wrong thing, some people doing the wrong thing. And there's not a shelter in this country. There's not a nonprofit, there's not a church, there's not a public or private building that would tolerate the things that I've just described in the community. They would call the police. That would be the first thing a lot of these groups would do. And then they might even prohibit people from entering their building in the future. So I don't understand why we would treat a public street or a public park any different. And I don't think it's compassionate to allow these problems to fester. We have to give people the resources to help themselves and to make sure they stay alive. But we also have to uphold some standards in this community. So that's my rant. I believe in compassion and accountability. I don't think they're contradicting things. I think they're building blocks of civilization. We can't have one without the other. And right now, I don't feel like we have either. We have compassion in words, but not really in action. And we really don't have accountability for some behavior that just wouldn't be tolerated by anybody's standards. And that's what I'm asking for. I have a number of orders. I can break it down one by one. I'm trying not to be too long, but my main thing is I just want us to treat this like it's an emergency. It's been a problem for a long time, and we're not treating it like it's an emergency. And I want us all to work together, people who are concerned for the homeless and the people who are concerned about what's happening on the streets. They're not contradicting information. We both care about the same things in different ways, and we need to work together to address this. I think we're a city that can do this. So I'll leave it at that and then talk about my other orders.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Davis and then Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the good Counselor from Ward 1 for introducing this. I'm happy to have been a cosponsor. I won't even attempt to match the eloquence of the words from our good colleague from Ward 1. But I want to bring a shared perspective because in Ward 6, we see a lot of these same issues. In Ward 6, there is a facility. It's only there because the Somerville Homeless Coalition moved out of their offices. It's only available during the daytime, and it doesn't even begin to scratch the surface of what we need to do. And I have in the past, and I do commend the administration for working with the Homeless Coalition on setting that up. But it's been years that I and my colleagues on the council and colleagues prior have put in orders, have put in budget requests, have made budget priorities to create full-time facilities, to create not only additional positions, but departments or units within a department to provide more assistance, to significantly increase the assistance and aid that we provide to our community partners who have expertise in this field. That's the low-hanging fruit. Before we build, you know, a capacity on our own, we could look to our community partners more than we are already doing. And as I said, this administration has taken steps that we have, that hadn't been taken previously. And so it's worth repeating, but I completely agree that it is long past time to look at this situation as an emergency. We do have other resources, and we need the administration to treat it as an emergency with the type of urgency that it requires because I too have seen in the last several weeks and months, all of the exact same scenarios up in Ward 6. The kind of things that, this is not over the eight years I've been in this seat, but just in the last few weeks and months, fighting, all of the same things that Counselor McLaughlin noted. And I'm sure that my good colleague from Ward 2 is probably going to share some of the same thoughts because, as we have said, we need not one facility in part-time in Davis Square. We need facilities in East Somerville, in Union Square, more in Ranon Davis Square, throughout the city, so people don't have to look and so that there are, at every stage of where people are, we have assistants able to meet them at that place. And that's the tricky part of it, and that's why our community partners should be more, we should be engaging more with them tomorrow so that, you know, we can address this issue as we build our own internal capacity, which also needs to happen, which we've all been saying for years now. This is, I'm not saying anything new here. What is new is to just bluntly say that we need to treat this like an emergency. So I echo that, I support that, and I'm glad to be a cosponsor here.
Thank you, Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I don't think it's any surprise that the Counselors from Ward 1, 6, and 2 are first in line to talk about this because I think we are all passionate about the way we care for our neighbors and have seen over the years how that has degraded. You know, one of the biggest losses in Union Square a number of years ago was the closure of the Ruby Rogers Center, which is a peer-run center for folks struggling with mental health issues and, you know, all the other things that come along with living rough. So, you know, that was a place where you could go. We have it within our capacity to do this. It is not outrageously expensive to stand up a center that will give people a place to stay, that will give them access to services. As we do this, I agree with my colleagues that it is an emergency when, you know, when I can Narcan somebody on my way home from the gym to my house, just a two-block walk. It is an emergency when we have 21 people sleeping in Chucky Harris Park. So I appreciate all the discussion and talk of compassion because truly I think that is the only compassionate thing we can do, is to provide for our neighbors. I don't necessarily have to reference the golden rule on this, but the fact is that the disruptions, the desperation leads to addiction, leads to bad behavior, leads to overdose. And, you know, here we are, just a couple of weeks, or just one week away from overdose Awareness Day. So as we talk about this, as we go forward, and hopefully both demanding resources for these problems, and hopefully seeing that prioritization from the mayor's office, I would also just continue to implore that we do so with an understanding, compassionate understanding of the realities. And that is to say that, you know, the people on the streets are dealing with all kinds of things. We heard the words from Jordan. Thank you, Ms. Byrne, for relaying those. The people struggling with substance use disorders, right? And so I hope that any facilities we do put up are conscious of that and are not exclusive to our neighbors who are struggling with that. So I thank my colleague from Ward 1 for bringing this forward. I thank my friends and neighbors, including well-known Ward 2 resident Kate Byrne, and all the folks who have been meeting over the last several months to try to bring an even more escalated attention to this. I agree with my colleague from Ward 1. It is insufficient to hide the issue or to neglect to speak of it in the open. I think we need to address it by taking care of our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pinera Newfeld.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you to my colleague from Ward 1 for bringing these orders forward and this resolution. Like, I assume Counselor Davis got a lot of phone calls last weekend about the increase in homelessness in Davis Square, a tent that was erected in Seven Hills Park, and the concern from our neighbors about resources that are available or not available in the community. So I've been having a lot of conversations with folks about it and agree wholeheartedly that we need to treat this like an emergency, that it is. When I started working in COVID relief, I remember saying and thinking at the time, we're not going to see the disastrous impacts from this global pandemic for years down the road. And we're seeing it now with this increase in homelessness, increase in substance use disorders, coupled with a stark decrease in resources in our communities. A stark decrease, a cut, right, from the federal government, from the state government, of resources to address the impacts of the global pandemic. And it kind of frustrates me to my core that, you know, we're often in a situation where we have to react instead of be proactive and plan ahead. I was perusing the ARPA website because there's a funding subcategory in particular, 2.16, for anyone who peruses this website as frequently as I do, on long-term housing security and specifically services for unhoused persons. There's two items we've allocated. As a reminder, we have 77, had $77 million allocated to us in Somerville. We have allocated from the $77 million, $15,000 for emergency short-term hotel stays for our unhoused population, and over $1 million for an engagement center pilot. It looks from here that all 77 is either committed or spent at this point. However, there was a $10 million nonprofit round that was, the deadline was extended to the end of this month. So I'd be curious, I can, I'll make some additional orders for our next council meeting where we are as a city and determining how we're spending the additional $10 million for our nonprofit partners. I'd love to see us commit additional dollars that we have and can toward this emergency to support our unhoused population. So just kind of trying to make sure we can be as creative as possible, allocating as many resources as we can because it, like in the words of Counselor McLaughlin, we have to think about this through as much deep compassion as a community, as a council, as well as taking action and making sure that we walk the walk on our values. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank my colleagues for their comments on this. I'll simply add that homelessness is a policy choice, and the situation in our city is really clear evidence of decades of policy failure at the national, state, and local level. I'm a cosponsor of the resolution because I am alarmed by what I see in our city. And I'll just say, we have a moral obligation to address this in a way to provide support for the folks who just desperately need help here. I've privately pushed the administration and city staff to come up with a concrete plan to address this, and I'll just say, I'll do whatever I can do personally as one city counselor at large to be part of that effort. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is anyone from the administration here? I have a quick question.
Director Singh.
Legislatively, I was unwelcome. My quick question for you, I was just going through the FY '24 budget, trying to find the exact appropriation that it was, but in the FY '24 budget and the subsequent weeks, we created an emergency stabilization fund for folks facing a whole number of housing emergencies. Quite frankly, what I'm hearing from my colleagues, what residents have come and told me myself, what I've witnessed, is that this is an emergency, right? This order is about declaring an emergency. Has the administration considered appropriating any of those funds from that emergency housing stabilization fund for this exact purpose, trying to get folks off the streets, get people with a little bit of shelter? Has that been a discussion the administration has had?
Through the President, thank you, Counselor Kelly, for that question. The administration has been exploring all of the options that are available, including that appropriation, and we look forward to having further discussions in the Public Health, Public Safety Committee, and happy to come back to you and provide more updates on that.
Through the President, so the administration has considered using the Emergency Response Stabilization Fund to address this problem? I just, that sounds great if that's the case.
Through the President, we're looking at all of the options. I'd be happy to meet with our director, HHS director, and our finance director and come back to you with an update on whether that specific option, what the plans are for that specific appropriation.
Thank you for that. I have no further questions. I just want to point out to residents who are here tonight, there is an emergency stabilization fund that we, back in June, put $300,000 into, and the purpose of this emergency stabilization fund was to address, you know, common necessities of life for residents displaced by public emergencies or other forms of distress. Personally, I think this is a perfect example of an emergency response fund being put to good use and getting people the resources they need. So I hope that in the month of September, the administration will come back with an appropriation. We've got multimillion dollars in appropriations that we will be approving in the coming weeks, and I hope that an actual financial dollar amount is going to be put on the lives of these residents who really need some help and resources right now. So there's money, there's a fund you can use, but obviously there are many other funds that you can use, as Counselor Pinera Newfeld said. So I'm looking forward to approving those appropriations in the coming weeks.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez-Malcar.
I'm not going to speak more about homelessness because I think Counselor McLaughlin really spoke from the heart, and I really want to, that's something I've always appreciated about him. So thank you. I just want to throw some ideas out. I was today at Del Boy. There's a parking lot with some trailers in there. We're toughs when in an urgent matter to house their students, build, put together a bunch of trailers. We have lots of parking spaces at Assembly. I'm trying to think because immediately my mind goes as like, we have a lack of space in this, and where do we house? There's an empty building that's a little harder because it's not in suitable conditions across from the, ironically, from the Chucky Harris Park, but I think with that something long-term, but short-term, we should take those things into consideration. I don't know if toughs is fully housing. I'm putting them in a compromising situation, but I'm trying to think of where and how we can make space for residents. I also want to reiterate something I know Counselor McLaughlin is as passionate about is abandoned buildings. I have a housing, units of housing on the corner of Porter and Elm that during my whole tenure here has been empty. I think we cannot tolerate buildings that just sit there vacant when we are having a housing crisis. And I wanted to remind everyone, in the past three years, we have seen in the United States of America, housing be a corporate, bought up by corporations, whether it's an LLC or anything. We are in a dire crisis, and we need to, this is a national thing, but I think we need to, and I thank you for bringing this up because that's one of the crises we have. We also have, I want to bring up that some of the homeless are people who can't get work, who might have come into this country and they have no legal status. And we allow, in this country, folks to get a tax ID number to work, but we don't give them legal status. They are subsidizing our social security. This is a message to all of the other states who are pro or are pro, our immigrants are subsidizing your social, you are able to retire because of billions of dollars to contribute. It is time we, that we recognize that we can't make housing into a corporate investment, and we also need to recognize that we, it is time we get our immigrants a legal status to work here. If we're going to give them a tax ID, that's taxation without representation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I'll just add, I'd absolutely like to cosponsor this, and I want to thank everyone who's here tonight, everyone who's been going to these community meetings and putting in the work. I think, as Counselor McLaughlin said, this is not the first time we've talked about this. This will not be the last, and I think all of us know, on a certain level, talk is cheap. And what we need to do is get to work, and I'm really glad that you phrased this the way you did, as a state of emergency. And I'm also glad to see all of Counselor McLaughlin's specific items that we're now going to go through, and my understanding would be to refer these to committee so that we can have more concrete discussions on what actions we are going to take. So this resolution is approved, and let's move on to reading these items.
Absolutely. Item 4.4 is an order by Counselor McLaughlin that the Chief of Police conduct compliance checks on liquor stores.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. To be clear, some of these orders are old orders that we have discussed thoroughly. Some of them are just directives that I'd like to see be done. I'm not going to refer everything to committee. If anyone else would like to see it discussed in committee, please speak up. This is one that I already know is happening because I've requested it, but I might ask for it to go to committee for confirmation. Liquor stores, bars, anyone who serves alcohol has a legal obligation to not over-serve their customers, and they can be held liable for over-serving people and for the incidents that come from that. And there's a, I have three liquor stores on my street. I have one that I've personally seen refuse service to people who are over-served, and I have another one that doesn't do as great of a job. And people will just camp right in front of the liquor store and drink there in open sight of the place that they just purchased it. So I'm asking for compliance checks on this to ensure that people are not being over-served. And this could go to Public Health and Safety, if that's okay.
All right. That item will be referred to Public Health and Public Safety.
Item 4.5 is an order by Counselor McLaughlin that the Commissioner of Public Works and Director of Health and Human Services coordinate daily inspection and cleanup of all city-owned properties along Lower Broadway.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Thanks, Mr. President. I know some of this work's already being done. I see Director Jill Latham in the audience and thank her for repeatedly cleaning up Chucky Harris Park. I've been down there after residents have complained and seen that it was immaculate, and then I go down the next day and it's a mess. And it's just one of those things that need to be addressed on a daily basis. People don't feel like they can use the park anymore. I take my kid down to the park, well, I'll have residents call me, tell me what's going on, and I'll take my kid down to the park, and I'll say hello to the people hanging out there. No one bothers me or my kid, but what does bother me is having them traipse through a bunch of cigarette butts on the floor and liquor bottles and things like this. So we'd need more consistent cleanups of this. The East Somerville Library, where people are defecating in the grass, even though we've provided porta-potties and access to other restrooms, things like this, that just, the city needs to clean up more. And to, again, reiterate my point, when people get used to living in these conditions, they stop having respect for their own community and respect for themselves. It degrades morale all around the community. So this is one I'd like to just approve because I know it'll get done, and if it doesn't, I'll definitely be in contact.
That item is approved.
Item 4.6 is an order by Counselor McLaughlin that the Community Outreach Help and Recovery Team work in conjunction with the Homeless Coalition to address homelessness in East Somerville open spaces.
This is already happening. I thank this council and the mayor for approving two new positions to the core program. I just put it in here to show proactive steps we can take because I'm constantly being asked, what should we do? And I'm not an expert. I'm just a person who sees what's happening on the street, and I'm trying to get the experts to do what I need to see get done. So this could be marked for approval.
That item is approved.
Item 4.7 is an order by Counselor McLaughlin that the Director of Housing and the Director of Health and Human Services update this council regarding repeated requests to provide shelter to homeless residents.
This has been numerous times. I think this was Counselor Kelly's order at one point, or mine. I think I have two of the same order here, but once again, just to show the history that this is not the first time we've asked for this. I've seen orders going back four or five years requesting this. I suppose I'd like this sent to committee.
This we will refer to Public Health and Public Safety.
Item 4.8 is an order by Counselor McLaughlin that the Mayor and the Director of Health and Human Services engage Somerville Cares About Prevention to conduct compliance checks on establishments serving liquor to prevent over-serving of alcohol.
So we have a program called Somerville Cares About Prevention, which is mostly geared towards preventing young people from getting into drugs and alcohol. One of their programs is they hire students and volunteers to go to liquor stores and see if they will get served alcohol without a license. I think this is a program that already exists that could be adapted to serve, in my case, there's people who, even when a liquor store refuses service, they get someone to buy the liquor for them and go inside and do this. So I think maybe we can use this program to address that problem. That would be one I'd like to see put in committee.
We'll refer this to Health and Human Services.
Item 4.9 is an order by Counselor McLaughlin that the Director of Inspection Services conduct regular inspections of liquor stores in East Somerville to ensure cleanliness outside of the properties and find businesses in violation accordingly.
So again, we, I have a couple liquor stores that are really not taking care of their own properties, and, you know, there's trash left behind by customers, but I go by one liquor store and there's 20 boxes out there because the person just threw it away and didn't put it in their own trash. That's completely on them, and it seems to be a regular issue. So I would like to make sure that these liquor, and there's also, everyone talks about the nipped bottles and the trash around these buildings. Doesn't take much for a business owner who is selling alcohol to people to maybe look outside their own property and make sure the product that they just serve someone isn't lying right in front of the property. I will just mark this one for approval.
That item is approved.
Item 4.10 is an order by Counselor McLaughlin that the Executive Director of the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development investigate the possibility of seizing by eminent domain 118 Broadway, AKA the East End Grill, for the purposes of providing homelessness services.
So this is just an old order that I put in. I don't think the city's going to do this, whatever. There's other places, we can find something. I flagged this one because a person died in this building from the elements, and it's been abandoned for over 10 years, and there doesn't seem to be any sign of anything happening there. And I just want to flag this, not as like, I want this to happen, but these are just the acts of a desperate person who's trying to get anything done in the community and hasn't really seen any progress yet. So I'll just mark this for approval.
That item is approved.
Item 4.11 is an order by Counselor McLaughlin that the Director of Health and Human Services update this council on the progress of safe consumption sites.
So we have gotten updates on this. Things, I am optimistic. I think it's going to happen, but I wanted to put this in because we've all been talking about this for a while, and I do believe that even though it should happen sometime in the near future, if it was a bigger priority going back years, we might already have this in place, and it might be something to help the community and help address the problems I'm seeing. And I just do also want to flag, though, that my vision for safe consumption sites has always been to get drugs off the street and to have people not using in public parks and on the street and to have people not die on the street. And I am concerned now, seeing that I don't think the accountability aspect of things is really being addressed. If we have safe consumption sites but no accountability for the surrounding area, that could be a real issue. And I think, again, we can have compassion and accountability. We can have innovative ideas like this, controversial ideas at that, and have them succeed, but we also need to consider the unintended consequences of this. So unless someone else wants us to go to committee, I think we have discussed it, but I'm just waiting for it to happen.
Counselor Burnley would like to cosponsor. I'd personally love to hear whatever the latest conversation is, so I'd like this to go to Public Health and Public Safety.
Item 4.12 is a resolution by Counselor McLaughlin that the administration update this council on the progress toward providing direct homeless services to East Somerville residents in temporary and permanent locations within Ward 1.
Similar order. I'd like this referred to committee.
This item is referred to Public Health and Public Safety.
Item 4.13 is a resolution by Counselor McLaughlin that the administration update this council regarding- this council regarding increases in homelessness and the direct responses taken by the city to address those increases.
Very old order, I'd like this referred to committee.
Public health and public safety, please.
Item 4.14 is a resolution by Counselor McLaughlin that the Administration update this council regarding progress toward Portland Lou's.
Mr. President, you brought this one up, I was glad to support you on it. Know it's gonna happen, hasn't happened yet. Again, it's, I just think if our priorities were straight, a lot of these great ideas would already be in place.
Counselor Burnley and myself would like to cosponsor, and that, let's send that to, that's in Finance, right? You guys have done a bunch of stuff on that? Yeah, let's refer that to Finance for an update.
And item 4.16 is a communication by Counselor McLaughlin conveying numerous locations suitable for temporary and long-term shelter for the homeless population.
So, Mr. President, people from the city, when I ask for a location, say, where do you want it? I bring up locations, so that doesn't work. I'm not a real estate agent, I'm not an expert on property in the city, and I don't have the power to take property or to allocate resources to buy properties. I have a list here of short and long-term options that we could use to address this situation. One of them has to work, and if one of them doesn't work, then I encourage the city to sweep the community, as I have, and look for spots. I've brought up 118 Broadway, the East End Grill, 90 Washington Street, which we own, Cross Street Center, which we own, there's another city building on Cross Street, we have a lot of buildings in the city. When the COVID pandemic happened, the previous mayor set up a tent in Assembly Square, right next to the Assembly Mall, they were making masks there within a week, they had a tent set up for people to get COVID tests. Again, people pointed out, we've had trailers for tough students, for Summerville High students, all sorts of options to find a place for people. And I just, I shouldn't be the one who has to come up with every single idea, because I will accept anything I can get. So I've conveyed these as possible ideas to hope that somebody who has the power to make this happen makes this happen. I'd like this referred to committee.
This item is referred to public health and public safety.
And the next item that the council is going to take out of order is item 10.13, a communication of the mayor conveying an update on the Winter Hill Community Innovation School.
Excellent. We are joined by Mayor Ballantyne to give us an update on the Winter Hill School, and just before that, thank you again to Counselor McLaughlin and everyone who's here tonight. I look forward to working with all of you. I see a number of the mayor's staff here as well. Just a moment, colleagues. Mr. President, could we lay this one on the table and move on?
Yeah, let's take up elections.
Excellent. The next items that will be taken out of order are Items 7.2, 7.3, and 7.4, all requests of the mayor. Requesting approval to allow the Chief of Police to assign police officers at all polling locations for the November 7th, 2023 municipal election, as required by the Votes Act. Requesting approval of November 1st through November 3rd as the dates for early voting. And requesting approval to change the polling location for Ward 4 Precinct 2 and Ward 4 Precinct 2A from the Winter Hill Community Innovation School to the senior building at 240 Pearl Street. And the polling location for Ward 4 Precinct 3 from the Winter Hill Community Innovation School to the Brazilian Presbyterian Church at 212 School Street.
Our old friend, Director Salerno, welcome. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening to everyone. What would you care to take up first, or any questions?
Why don't we go through them in order, please?
Sure. Okay, so the...
Item 7.2 is the assigned police officers. Are there questions on this item, colleagues? Seeing none, that item is approved. Sorry? Okay, yes. I guess that's a request for a roll call vote? Okay, roll call, please.
Okay, so this is a roll call vote on item 23-1230, requesting approval to allow the Chief of Police to assign police officers at all polling locations for the November 7th municipal election, as required by the Votes Act. On that item, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott. Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Nay.
Counselor Gomez-Moakad.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Panetta-Nufeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
With nine counselors in favor, one opposed, and one absent, that item is approved.
Excellent. And colleagues, just, and members of the public, just as a reminder, as a result of a recently passed state law, these now need to be approved by municipal bodies. If the administration or the council wishes to kind of come up with a long-term solution, we could, or whenever the election items come before us, we can discuss them at those times, as we're doing tonight. So the next item has to do with the dates for early voting. Are there questions on this item from the council? Anything that you'd like us to know, Director, beyond what's here?
We will be here, right in this very chamber, if you approve it.
Seeing no discussion, that item is approved. And the next item has to do with Ward 4. The Winter Hill is obviously not a suitable voting location. I assume, as you always do, that you checked with the Ward 4 Counselor. Seeing no discussion, that item is approved. Counselor Klingon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank Director Salerno for acting so quickly. I know this has been a strain on everybody, the Winter Hill School has been just, it's pretty much ruined many, many people's summers, and, you know, we know that we want to have these kids in the safe building on time, and I hope we're gonna get an update in a moment. But in the meantime, the business of a government must go on, and elections are coming. And Director Salerno was able to secure two really great locations that are both easily accessible for voters, and actually kind of work out, in some ways, closer to, with the new redistricting, people in Pearl Street Park, it's a lot more convenient now than going all the way up to the Winter Hill School. So I'm pleased with this situation. I don't know what the future holds, I know he's gonna come back, even for the presidential election, it'll probably be these same locations. I think the main thing is that we just all get the word out, the administration get the word out to the voters as to where their exact polling location is, I know I'll be doing that. But thank you to the administration, and thank you to Director Salerno for this, and to a successful election.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Wilson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. It might be an obvious thing, but hopefully there will be signs at the Winter Hill directing people to where they should go. All right.
And just as additional information, we've gotten permission from both locations to use it for the March 5th presidential election.
Excellent. Well, thank you as always, Director. Seeing no further questions, that item is approved as well. And let's take off the table, 10.13.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And 10.13 is a communication of the mayor conveying an update on the Winter Hill Community Innovation School.
Madam Mayor, welcome.
Thank you. Nice to see everybody. I hope you had a restful break. So, good evening, city councilors, Mr. President, and everyone joining us here tonight. I want to take time to provide an update on our preparations to welcome back the Winter Hill School students next week. While we know the last couple of months haven't been easy for the Winter Hill families and staff, I'm excited to report that the school is set to start on time at our new Winter Hill locations. The first day of school is next Wednesday, August 30th, and our teams are working now through the weekend and early next week to be ready for us to welcome grades 1 through 8 at the Edgerly, and welcome pre-K and kindergarten students at the Capelana. Make no mistake, the work is still underway at the Edgerly, with final construction, finishing, and cleanup still going on. To the layperson, this may look daunting, but our site superintendent and renovation team has been clear, we are on schedule to welcome our students back on Day 1. In nine short weeks, we've mobilized countless resources to move over 430 students and staff to two new buildings. We have brought in an emergency management consultant to set up an incident command center, and built a team of over 30 people from a dozen different departments, running task force, managing food and nutrition, transportation and mobility, recreation and after-school programming, communication and finance, and of course, renovation and construction. I am not only proud of the work that has been done, but the determination and the spirit of all the staff consultants who have made this possible. Their dedication, tireless work, have ensured a welcoming and safe learning environment for our students and staff, both at the Edgerly and the Capelana. And, you know, I would like to acknowledge that I have some of my team here. Remember, this isn't we, it's not an us and them, we've been working as a team with the Summerville Public Schools to get up and ready. And I would just ask if you could all stand up, because you've all been working on this, and if you can just imagine anywhere from 10 to 30 people behind them, working to get things done, and not including, you know, the construction crews that have been there. Having done a walkthrough of the Edgerly twice this week with our new superintendent, Dr. Ruben Carmona, I can honestly say I was very impressed. It was not just the renovation to create classroom space, which was done in record time in the evenings and over the weekends, it was the fact that as much thought went into creating inviting outdoor spaces for recess, the new music room, places for art, all the things that ensure we are focused on the whole child and have been thought about this in the process. We are ready to serve the students in all the areas with everything from food and nutrition, quality classrooms, to specialist services, and after-school programming. Staff have begun moving in yesterday, August 23rd, and have continued to work today, the 24th. Again, they are moving in as final work is being wrapped up, so it's not turnkey just yet. So we need to thank our teachers for their patience. We are planning tours of the Edgerly for Edgerly families only on the evenings of Monday, August 28th, and Tuesday, August 29th, so they can get a sense of the new spaces. We are also ready to go to the Capelana. Incoming pre-K and kindergarten students will have orientation on either August 30th or 31st, before school starts for them on September 5th. The last eight or nine weeks have been primarily focused on safely moving students to new locations, but that is not all we have done. At the same time, while we've been doing that work, we have not forgotten about the future and our commitment to the Winter Hill School community. We have been working on a K through 8 master planning and also assessing the Winter Hill Community Innovation School at Sycamore Street. These items have been moving forward at the same time as we transition to new school buildings. I am also happy to report that in spite of our need to close 115 Sycamore to deal with remediation, we have continued to make progress. Summerville Public Schools, Capital Projects have completed the detailed review of the district-wide enrollment study. They have also performed additional in-depth evaluations of special education enrollment trends that will help us to forecast space needs at a district level and for the Winter Hill Community Innovation School. This critical step helps us to know how big a renovated or a new building will need to be to meet our needs. The engineers, architects have also completed their broader structural evaluation of the existing Winter Hill building. They are currently using the data to prepare conceptual designs for a range of options for renovations, additions, or total reconstruction on the Sycamore Street side. They are in the process of preparing their reports for our review, and we expect to see those results in September. As you may recall from previous presentations, this is all baseline information, from which we will select a design team, establish a school building committee, and continue into what the MSBA calls the feasibility study. We are on track to move to these next phases this fall. As always, we are committed to engaging our school families and communities in discussion to help guide our decisions. Our community will be helping to shape the future of the schools that serve them. To review the timeline for this continued work, please watch for updates on the Winter Hill website at summervillma.gov/WHCIS. You'll also find updates there on all the logistics for the new Winter Hill school year. Again, I can't praise and thank all the teams that have worked so hard and tirelessly all summer to get here. I again want to thank the council for your support of swift appropriations needed to fund this work. Our construction teams are still working through a final punch list of items, staffs are getting oriented, and we are working diligently to get all families informed of all the back-to-school information we need to be ready for Day 1. Our Summerville Public Schools teams are ready to help our families and students get used to the new environments and routes to school, and in fact, they are excited about it. If you need the most current updates, they can be found, again, at summervillma.gov/WHCIS. Thank you again. We have some key staff here this evening to provide more detail and answer your questions. So I would just like to acknowledge the Director of Infrastructure and Asset Management, Rich Raish, the Director of DPW, Jill Latham, Transportation Planner Greg Hanafin, Budget Manager Mike Mastromboney, Chief of Staff Nikki Spencer, Superintendent Dr. Ruben Carmona, and Chad Mazza, who's the Director of Operations in Summerville Public Schools.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and thank you all for being here. And I'll just say, for folks following this, the school committee, oh, excuse me, the school committee has our regular meeting on this coming Monday, and I know that a lot of these issues will be also addressed in great depth there. Are there questions from counselors? Counselor Strezzo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, Madam Mayor, thank you very much for your swift action on this. I had a question, if I, I think the Director of Infrastructure might be best to answer it. I mean, I'm happy to ask you, but, technical question. Director, may I ask you a question? Wanted to ask about transportation and pick up where we left off. What is the plan for how many students who are planning to bus if necessary, and what does it look like as of this date and time?
So I would say that is not Director Raish. Who wants to answer that? Superintendent Carmona will answer.
I think I can address the question. Before I do that, thank you, President Ewan Campan, and thank you to the counselors for your public service as well. Before I start, I just wanted to echo the words of the mayor. This has been a true collaborative effort, and on a regular basis, on a weekly basis, we meet with the city just to make sure that we all are on the same page. I will be remiss not to mention that Tufts also, the Tufts leadership and administration has basically provided us a home to our central office, because... has basically provided us a home to our central office, because we are moving to the Tufts building. And also, I will be remiss if we don't mention that our community, Winter Hill community, our families, our children, our staff have been very resilient and very understanding, and we will try to do our best to make sure that this transition is as painless as possible. I also just want to, just a quick note, today, this week has been a busy week with the Winter Hill as well as the Edgerly construction and work. We have welcomed 120 new teachers to the district. Also, we are working on doing professional development for all our administrators. At the end of the day, today was the last day of that work. We had a community circle, and we celebrated all our learning, our readiness for the kids, and also many of the members were asked to take a minute to really recognize the needs of our community, especially our colleagues at the Edgerly and Winter Hill. So that commitment to the community and that honoring of our colleagues who are in the middle of this, it reminds me of the kind of community we are right now. So the question about transportation, so I think that you might be familiar with the fact that we have a significant scarcity of drivers in our, not only in, you know, in Massachusetts, but nationwide. Despite that, we will be providing a service for our students. We have three buses that normally provide the services for students that are special education, MLE, as well as students who have, have some homeless challenges. After that, we have another route that we will be, we will start picking up students from the Winter Hill and then bring them back again to the Edgerly. And we will have a criteria to provide services to students. So at this point, we actually will be communicating that to families, but we most likely will be covering all the pre-K through K students, as well as that we are establishing a criteria of .8 miles for students who are in grades 1 to 3, beyond the .8 mile. And then after that, any student that has a hardship, and so the criteria for hardship is also will be communicated to families in the coming days.
Mr. President, through you to our superintendent. And apologies for Director Raish. When we spoke in July in our last city meeting, it was you that answered that question, so certainly not trying to ignore superintendent. Thank you so much for your information. So what would the number look like of what you're ballpark estimating of how many students?
Number of students?
Of transportation that you're...
I think that around, you know, 40 to 50 students in pre-K and K. And I think our capacity will be around 110 students. And again, it all depends on the sizes as well. Buses, these buses carry up to 60 to 70 students depending on the, you know, the size of the child or the age of the child. All our students in grades 7 through 8 will be provided free passes. And, you know, there is also a city component to this, which is all the infrastructure and systems that we have in place for access of the Edgerly, but that's, you know, we can talk about that. That's more of a, on the city side.
You want to ask a...
Counselor Klingon on this.
President, on this particular transportation question, to Director, Superintendent Carmona. So in terms of the criteria, like I'm specifically speaking on behalf of the Mystic Learning Center, who, they do like a walking school bus from the Winter Hill. It's, you know, Winter Hill to the Mystic Learning Center is a walkable distance versus they might have one or two kids at the Capoeira and then a handful of kids at the Edgerly. So if you worked it out with those parents, would, like, are you communicating with these type of programs whereby you might take those kids back to the Winter Hill or directly to the Mystic Learning Center, but most likely the Winter Hill, coordinating with the leadership at the Mystic Learning Center where they can then walk from the Winter Hill School, you know, back down like as they always have done in the past? Is that something you're able to do?
Say, what was the question again? I'm sorry.
So, like, programs like the Mystic Learning Center, whose constituents or whose customers typically would qualify, you know, and be in that range, I'm just curious if you're able to work with the different programs in the city, be it, I don't want to get, I'm specifically speaking to the Mystic Learning Center, and not like the YMCA or Elizabeth Peabody, they have a van, Elizabeth Peabody, but I've been asked by the Mystic Learning Center, and I've asked this question publicly. I'm trying to make sure that we can get those kids to the Winter Hill to meet the councilors from the Mystic Learning Center at the Winter Hill School so they can do the walking school bus back to the Mystic Learning Center.
We have multiple strategies to provide access to after-school programs for the kids. I know that we also, in the afternoon, we will be providing some form of after-school program for the kids to make sure that we can provide them access back to the Winter Hill School. As far as the different options, I think that that's one thing that, you know, we'll have to look into that, but we are open to possibilities to make sure the kids get their after-school programs.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you, and I'll yield back to Counselor Strezzo in just a moment, but I would ask that you specifically reach out to the Mystic Learning Center folks and, you know, coordinate a way to get those children back to the Winter Hill School. Where there's only 10 days, that doesn't sound like you kind of guessed at the capacity of being 100. I feel like we, you know, day one's going to come, and I think it's going to, people are going to be really confused and kind of left to their own devices. So I'm hoping we can get that communication with the Mystic Learning Center ASAP, but that's just, I'm just putting that out there for them as, again, advocating for a program in my ward, and they've asked that question, so thank you.
Definitely. Thank you for the point in there.
Counselor Strezzo?
Thank you, Mr. President. One more, and then I'll hop back in line to the rest of my colleagues. Really quick on that point with the capacity of transportation, so typically there's 40 to 50, would that be, how many regularly, I guess, at least say, last school year were bused in opposed to the addition, the additional expectation of this year to the Winter Hill School, I'm sorry, Edgerly?
Last year, so we don't have transportation in Somerville, is that right? So are we talking about the experience when we brought them to the top building?
Mr. President, through you to our superintendent. What is the regular, because there are some students that do get transportation if they have it on their IEP or...
Correct.
Et cetera. Like, what is the standard number versus what the expected number of extra students you're going to have to bus?
Yeah, so I think for students in the AMES program, we're talking about around 60 to 70 students, and students who are in the MLE program, in 20 to 30 students, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Superintendent Carmona, for being with us. I don't know if this question is for you, it might be for Director Raish. You know, I'm having a little bit of deja vu September of 2022, when we had the school building preliminary design program that had been in the fiscal year budget. We were told it was going to be done by the wintertime, and it was not complete. We had a lot of conversations about it during this FY24 budget process, which I think you had maybe just been appointed, so I don't know if you had the privilege of sitting with us through those conversations, but either to you or to Director Raish, you know, I don't want to have deja vu again. I do not want to have the fall of 2022 squandered and be in a situation where we're scrambling, where you're forced to be in the offices of Tufts University out of their good graces, and kids are being distributed across the city in ways that, you know, we don't even know if the walking school bus is going to get them where they got to go. So what is the administration doing? What is Capital Projects doing to ensure that we are actually finishing our plans this fall? And that we'll have some real answers and real updates. And to Counselor McGlaughlin's point, what are we doing to hold ourselves accountable to a timeline of this fall? Director Raish, welcome.
I'll yield the answer to you.
Yeah, and again, welcome, welcome to Somerville.
President, for your record, Director Richard Raish, Infrastructure and Asset Management.
No, 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 I've seen Director Raish, he doesn't look anything like you.
All right, all right. City engineer...
Welcome.
From 2012. As a matter of fact, I think Dr. Carmona could probably answer this, because we are in virtually weekly meetings. In addition to the emergency relocation of the Winter Hill to Edgerly, we are continuing to focus the work on that, because we know that that is ultimately the long-term solution. Since we posted the updated timeline that we discussed at budget, we've been hitting every one of those targets. We had, we deep-dive between the Capital Projects team and the SPS enrollment team. The stickiest part of this was getting the special education numbers right. We've completed that, the engineers have completed their evaluation of the building, so we understand the renovability of that building and what the massing options are for demolition and reconstruction. We're finishing up those last stages. Those reports are on target for release in September. That will then inform the next steps. We'll release RFPs to get a designer onboard. We're continuing our conversations with the MSBA on those findings, and we're starting to think about the composition of a building committee. So we're completely on target with our dates on that.
Follow-up question through the president to you. Thank you for that update. So just to clarify, when you say parts of this work, we went through so many of the different acronyms and iterations of studies, what's the difference between certain plans? So does that mean that the K to 12, K to 8 master plan is going to be completed before you reach out to a firm to do the feasibility study? Does that mean that the K to 8, excuse me, master plan will be completed in September, October? I'm just, I'm trying to get a sense of timeline. This was such a critical part of the conversation we had two months ago for us and for the public, just to know exactly what marks we're hitting, so we can keep each other mutually accountable.
Through the president, you know, what we're calling the K to 8 master plan sort of informs the next step. So, you know, I'd say essentially, other than finalizing reports, it will be substantially complete in September, and then we can move on to what we're calling the feasibility study, where we really evaluate the options with the public, with the families, with all that input.
Great. So step one, get the K to 8 master plan as complete as possible. Step two, feasibility plan. Step three, all the good RFPs and things of that nature. Okay. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Director. I have a question on that topic. So it sounds like that work is inclusive of the Brown School as well. I know that was obviously a huge part of the conversation. We're all focused on the Winter Hill, but we know that the Brown needs to be involved in this. Is that correct, that that process?
100%. Yes, the Brown is part of that.
Excellent. Counselor Gomisalakad?
I asked a clarifying question. I also had another comment. We need the RFP, because we need the consultant to work on the feasibility study, correct?
Through the president, that's correct.
Okay, I think there was a, that wasn't clear...
Sure.
...before, so I just want to clarify. Okay. And if I can, through the chair, make a comment. I'm very grateful, my biggest fear is that we were so enthralled in the, getting the Edgerly ready, that we would like let the plan go. Thank you, Mayor, for, you know, you did point out that you had been working on the plans, and you, you know, you said we had completed the enrollment study. I know there were some special education questions, and now that is very clear, that was, I know, understand, that was a concern of yours, because special education has others' space needs. We have completed the Winter Hill structural studies, correct?
Through the president, that is correct.
So that's good. And so in terms of, we need the whole report for the Winter Hill, is that the report that you will have in September?
Through the president, correct.
That's...
In draft form, enough for us to start the RFP stages, we will, you know, sort of finalize it for publication.
So I want to thank everyone again for, Dr. Carmona, and all of the, you know, Director Raish and all the staff for moving this along. I know, I'm noticing, I also, I'm very appreciative. We have two schoolyards, you know, one is complete, the other one, I saw them today, I go by there, I like taking my construction sites, you know me. You're trying to get that one...
Through the president, by my count, three, I'm counting the Edgerly as a new...
Oh, the Edgerly, well, there's the Edgerly building. We all too are trying to complete the bike path and get us a field out here. I was riding my bike on Saturday, and there were a lot of people working. I do want to recognize and honor all the workers who have been supporting Somerville, working long hours and leaving their families behind. Let's not underestimate that work. Our custodians who've been there supporting, I've seen them at the Brown School, supporting the staff there. I don't want to leave anybody who's picked up a broom and cleaned anything or supported in any way, thank you. I also know that the transportation piece, being in the traffic commission, has been a really, a joint effort where police, you know, we're talking about details to make sure our kids get there safely. There's a lot of logistics. The transportation team, the mobility team has been really great at answering questions of parents, like, if I had my bike, how do I get from point A to point B? So I really thank you. I know this can be like, it's just one busy city right now, so thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to our first school building committee meeting in September. I hope it's on the fourth Wednesday, as always. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to Director Raish. I think he'll be answering. So just a couple of Winter Hill specific questions. I know that while we were on break, there was some news about asbestos in the window caulking of the Winter Hill School. The reason I, the question I have regarding the Winter Hill School with that is that my understanding was we were supposed to be, we were going to be able to use the kitchen as the main food distribution center for the Edgerly, for the kids at the Winter Hill, as well as the gymnasium. But now that building has been completely closed, I know they're remediating right now, is there a chance, like, when will that school be come back online? Just those, even to use those portions of the school? And where, and currently, where are we going to do the food service from for the Edgerly?
Through the president. Yeah, yeah. The, we're, you know, as the counselor rightly points out, we discovered asbestos. We immediately deployed the team, both the hygienist and an abatement contractor. They're in there, you know, we're, we have to be deliberate about this to, you know, for workforce safety. We're getting it done as quickly as possible. It's hard for me to give you a hard date. The finish line is in sight, so I'm hoping to have good news on that building very soon. In the meantime...
Thank you for that. And, you know, if the food, and I'm going to hear about where the food is being prepared now anyway, but, you know, just losing the gymnasium even too was kind of a big hit, so, you know, as soon as it gets back online, that'll be good for the community as a whole.
Director Mazza?
Through you, Mr. President, Chad Mazza, Assistant Superintendent of Operations. For those of you who don't know, I came to Somerville in 2012 as principal of Winter Hill, so these kinds of things, they hit at a different level for me. So in terms of food, you know, the Winter Hill Kitchen has been a production kitchen forever, basically, since that building was built. And with it being closed, it created a hardship in terms of where will we be able to produce food, not only for the Winter Hill kids, but for the rest of the district. So we're currently looking at two different options. That won't be the same as Winter Hill, obviously, but it will be functional. One is East Somerville, which is where the quasi-production kitchen is right now, and then the other is Argenziano. We're working with a consultant with our Food Nutrition Services team to figure out what the best use of space is. But I want to just tell you the plan for food distribution as we start the school year, because obviously, the production kitchen won't necessarily be ready as it was at Winter Hill. So what we're planning on doing, all other schools are as-is, there will be no changes, 20 menus, no changes to the food that students are eating for breakfast, for snack, for lunch. So for Winter Hill, as you may or may not know, that kitchen was not a functional kitchen. It was functional in terms of serving 50 next wave full circle students when they were there, but...
You said one day about the Edgerly.
I'm sorry, Edgerly, yeah. Now we have an additional 400 students coming to the Edgerly, which means that kitchen has to have the capacity to make food, to house food, to store food, and right now it does not. So what we are doing with the help of Capital Projects and Food Nutrition Services is they are renovating that entire kitchen, making sure that the electrical load is such, so you can have... so you can have additional warmers, so you can have cold ovens that are necessary because you can't put a hood in that kitchen. So there's different ovens that we have ordered that are going to be used. That won't be ready for the beginning of school. So Food Nutrition Services is partnering with Stockpot Malden for hot meals for Winter Hill students. So the hot meals will be delivered on a daily basis to the Edgerly for Winter Hill students. There'll be a vegetarian choice. They also have cold choices, but for breakfast and for cold food, the Winter Hill, the food service staff will take care of that. So we're hoping that this is a month or less in terms of having Stockpot Malden help us, you know, with this endeavor. But, and again, I can't say enough about, you know, what they've done. They came and they helped us out in an emergency situation at the end of the summer with serving students when the kitchens were all closed. So partnering with them was an easy choice, but we wanted to make sure that Winter Hill students were getting quality meals and culturally responsive meals like the other schools are getting. So once the kitchen has been renovated and is set to go at the Edgerly, Food Nutrition Services will be serving hot meals. Stockpot Malden will, you know, stop that partnership for now, and Food Nutrition Services will take over and cook food like they normally would because they will now have the capacity to do that.
Okay, through you, Mr. President. I just want to say, you know, thank you for acting so quickly. I mean, it still sounds like there's a lot of pieces, moving pieces that are, have to be in place with, you know, the next seven days. But certainly when we, when I heard that news, knowing that the kitchen was still going to be an integral part of this entire plan to get the food from there to the Edgerly, I was really concerned, but this sounds like Malden, this Malden program is bailing us out. And, you know, just thanks for doing the work and getting this straightened out. And I just want to have this conversation publicly so that people understand, you know, what's happening, including myself, because I haven't heard anything. And so, thank you. I appreciate you guys, all the work, honestly. It's just been, been amazing in the way you're able to maneuver and pull together resources. Let's, you know, I know it's not going to be perfect. It's going to be bumpy, including the roots of school, as Counselor Gomez-McCarver has been mentioning. I've heard from parents about that, safety concerns. But it sounds like we have a plan, and so I'm looking forward to a smooth start of school.
Through you, Mr. President. Thank you. I mean, the real thanks goes to, you know, Lauren Mancine, who's Director of Food Nutrition Services, Assistant Director Pauli Nusello. They're on, I think, version G of the original plan that started when Winter Hill first closed, but the kitchen was open. And they've had to pivot and pivot and pivot and be creative. And I can't thank them enough because they have worked tirelessly to figure out a way to make sure that the Winter Hill students get what they need, like every other student in the district.
Nothing further, Mr. President, from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Strezko.
Thank you, Mr. President. Whomever, this is to whomever can answer this question. What is the plan for the teen center in the fall and for the next year while it is no longer potentially able to stay in the Edgerly?
Through you, Mr. President. Nikki Spencer, Chief of Staff. She/her hers. There's certainly been a space challenge with the teen center, and so we've spent a lot of time this summer getting a little creative. One solution has been ramping up the programming in other locations, such as the Powder House location that was currently being used. In addition, over the summer, they relocated to the East Community School. There will be services available and sort of open gym, is my understanding, at the Edgerly starting around 6:00 in the evening. And we're also exploring how we can get, you know, fun and creative meals, which was one of the requests even before this all started from the teens, that they really wanted some tasty food. So we're working on all of that. For our office space, our parks and rec staff are still scattered across the city, but they will be living in the Tufts Administrative Building. And we're still looking at all options in terms of other spaces for teens across the city. So that's still something that the team and OSPCD and a bunch of others have partnered on to look at potential sites for teen programming, knowing that the Edgerly is going to be slightly different than the teen center before.
Mr. President, through you, to our Chief of Staff. So does that mean that the teen center will no longer be functioning when school begins in the hours that it was last year, starting in November of last year?
Through the President, so it will be different in terms of it will no longer be the same site and the same hours. We are bolstering the hours in other locations, and we can certainly send those out to you. I don't have them right off the top of my head. And we are also partnering with folks like the Y to get the word out there of other programming that is closer too, so we know that folks have other options in the area. But we will be looking at alternative sites and opportunities to relocate different things, and we have been all summer long. So we've gone on, I want to say, five, six, seven different site visits to try to find locations as well.
Mr. President, through you, to Chief of Staff. So that means that there is no teen center as the start of the school year in the hours that they were facilitating the previous school year.
Through the President, actually, the hours will be relocated to the Powder House, is my understanding. And so it's in a different location, but we're also providing at least the gym space within the Edgerly later in the evening. So not at the Edgerly, but we are bolstering the hours and trying to maintain those in another location.
So no. Pardon me, Mr. President, through you. So no, because we know the Powder House location is a little cabin.
It is smaller, and so there will not be a gymnasium option. That is correct. And so we are providing that at the Edgerly a little bit later in the evening.
Through you, Mr. President, to Chief of Staff. So what is the plan for teens once they get out of school till 6:00 PM?
So we can give you the up-to-date dates and locations for all of this. And, you know, we do have other options like the teen room at the library. Again, we know that's not as big as what was at the Edgerly, but we're actively looking at all options in terms of other spaces that we could bring online. This is a very creative team. Our teen space coordinator is hard at work thinking about how to draw students to different locations, and they have had a fantastic summer of field trips and different food options and movie nights. And so we're continuing to be creative with that level of programming to get folks through the door.
Mr. President, through you, to Chief of Staff. Sorry about the noise. My son set my timer to call him every night to wish him a bedtime. So sorry about the disruption on that. Thank you for those answers, and I do want to stress the importance and the need of having a free teen center open aside from the concept of YMCA, which I assume would be a caution while the YMCA is fantastic. One of the things that makes the teen center so special, and even though it is a new center and concept, and I have been appreciative of the administration for being so responsive to teens and who need a place to be, that I am asking, requesting, begging, imploring that you make the teen center and spaces once the second school gets out for them to have a place to be and up to 8:00 PM and uphold the hours that were regular school time last year till 8:00 PM. I was so enamored with that. It was a great service, and we really have to maintain that as much as possible. Mr. President, through you, just a, oh dear, I think I lost my train of thought, but it is, it really does concern me, so I'm hoping. How are you getting the word out to the teens that this is going to be a little different? I mean, I'm sure they're, they're well aware of the change at the Edgerly, but how do you plan with the modifications of locations of spaces throughout the city? How are you going to get that out there to the teens?
Through you, Mr. President, to the Counselor. So I don't have the exact details on hand. First of all, we 100% agree. It is our intention to make as robust and holistic and welcoming teen spaces, and we absolutely agree that until the 8 o'clock hour is really important. I know that they have been in constant contact with the teens throughout the summer, and there have been a lot of engagement with the teens as these changes have happened. So I think that there is a pretty devoted following of these spaces, but we can get you more information from Director Yurkis around any other strategies that they're using. And I will confirm locations and hours so that you have those details.
Thank you, Counselor. Additional questions? All right. Well, thank you all. As we all know, this has just been an absolutely Herculean effort of so many people in the administration and the school department to make sure that these students and families and staff have a place to go next week. So obviously, we're not ready to celebrate today. We'll wait till the first day of school, but thank you all for your work and thank you for being here tonight. And Madam Mayor, we have to keep you here for another very important duty, which is I'd like to move the take-out-of-order item 4.1.
It actually returns us to the regular order of business, Mr. President, and item 4.1, an order by Counselor Ewan Campin, that this city council hereby reappoints Kimberly M. Wells to the position of city clerk for a three-year term.
Motion to approve.
Yay.
Vote, call vote.
Excellent. That item is approved, and we have the mayor here to administer the oath.
We can do it up here. I'll try to bring up the book. Right hand, please. Do you solemnly affirm that, excuse me, do, I don't have to raise my hand, do I? I'm so honored. This is the first time.
I do it too out of habit usually, so it's okay if you do.
Okay, all right. I'll copy you. Do you solemnly affirm that you will be, that you will faithfully perform the duties incumbent on you as city clerk for the city of Somerville, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Then please sign a statement to that effect right here.
That's over here. And I've got a black pen for me and a blue pen for you. Because I know. Back to me, and then you'll go over there. Oh, I got you a dead blue pen. Thank you. Oh, you can.
Thank you, Clerk Wells. When our previous clerk, John Long, stepped down, I think all of us had a pit of despair how he could ever be replaced, and I just could not be happier that you stepped up to take this job. Thank you for everything you do for us and for the city. Next item, please.
Item 4.2 is an order by Counselors Ewan Campin, Scott, and Strezko, that the Director of Mobility design traffic calming infrastructure for Laurel Street, which sees large volumes of high-speed, one-way traffic down a steep hill.
This item is referred to traffic and parking. Counselors Wilson, Burnley, Kelly would like to sign on. Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not on traffic and parking, so I appreciate your indulgence in just saying a few things here, first of which is I am so sad to see Laurel Street go. Laurel Street was a wonderful spot in Ward 2 for many years, and it was only in our, in our last year that I lost it, thanks to the census and the reorganization of the wards and precincts. But this is one of those stories that actually goes back a number of years. As much as I believe Counselor Ewan Campin and I did put forward a measure proposing Laurel Street as a sledding hill a number of years ago, it is a straight shot down. It is very fast, and neighbors there have been asking for help for a long time. I will say that I did get some staff attention from the mobility department to devise a series of chicanes that could potentially close it down. They were eligible for quick build, and unfortunately, we still have not gotten it to this point. There are traffic calming measures eminently available down there, and it just requires that we have the will to do it and set aside the staff time and effort to get it done in a quick build. So to all the residents of Laurel Street, I am sorry I could not get your traffic calming done, and I have confidence that you're in good hands with Counselor Ewan Campin and that working together, hopefully, we can all get it done sometime in the next year or two. Thank you, sir.
You're here. That item is approved.
And the next item is item 4.17, a resolution by Counselor Strezko, that the administration designate a small children's section in City Hall between the council chamber and the subcommittee room for parents and caregivers.
Counselor Strezko.
Pardon me, was wishing a nine-year-old a, I'm sorry, new 10-year-old a very happy birthday. So this item, I think we have to really consider how we use spaces and in consideration of families that come to visit and should also be included in city meetings. And as we open up City Hall to regular business life, I think that we need to carve out a little space of City Hall for visiting parents and guardians with a, where I envision a small bookshelf, maybe crayons, something basic, just a tiny space slice of this building that really emphasizes that everyone is welcome here, even our youngest citizens. And I, you know, I'd like to take this, send this to a committee, please.
Very well. The good news is that we do not need the administration's permission to do things in this chamber. We control it. So I'd refer this item to the Committee on Equity would be my suggestion, and I'd also encourage you to reach out to Clerk Wells about some of the logistics.
Thank you, yes. Mr. President, and I had asked, because the next step, I'm assuming is some allocation of funds for this, as I had mentioned over the summer on this. So that's where I'd really like to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 7.1 is a request of the mayor requesting ordainment of an amendment to the zoning ordinance to repeal Section 10.9, steep slopes.
That item is referred to land use with a copy to the planning board.
And that will bring us to item 7.5.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to waive the readings of items 7.5 to 7.28 and 10.6 to 10.11 and ask those be sent to Finance.
Those items are referred to Finance.
So the next item is item 7.29, a request of the mayor.
Let's waive the readings of items 729 to 735 and refer those to the Confirmation of Appointments Committee.
And that will bring us to item 9.1.
Counselor Burnley. Come again. Move for approval on item 9.1. Any others?
No, that's it.
All right, just 9.1.
Item 9.2.
I would like to move, to bring it to committee, license and permits.
That item, that item is referred to license and permits.
And item 9.3.
I would like to waive the readings of item 9.3 through 9.41. And given the heft of that many items, I have to give a few words. So thank you, thank you, everybody. Welcome to your flight from Somerville to Somerville. We have a plethora of great events, a number of block parties throughout the city, including in Spring Hill, pretty much every ward you could think of, as well as a number of great events put on by our community partners. East Somerville Main Street, September 19th is having a foodie crawl. You've heard that, right? If you're a foodie, get ready to crawl, go up and down and support local businesses. September 24th, we have Psychoforce CMT Charity Bike Ride where participants can ride either 10 miles, 20 miles, or 40 miles to support funding to combat a degenerative disease that affects the entire body. And that is also the same day as Yom Kippur, but it is before the official holiday because that is in the evening. And lest I forget, October 22nd, we have some special Halloweeny edition of Summer Streets, the Monster Mash version. And just for Somerville trivia, Monster Mash, partially written by Bobby Pickett, born 1938, Somerville lived on Winter Hill. So if you've ever danced to the Monster Mash, you've taken a little bit of the Somerville spirit and just injected it into your day. And with that, I would like to move for approval of these items. Thank you.
Thank you. Those items are approved. Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. While the Monster Mash is a heck of an event and definitely gets top billing, at least from city publicity, I also wanted to call attention to the Groundwork Harvest Festival coming up in just a couple of days. coming up in just a couple of days, on August 27th. It's an all-day event, and groundwork, if you're not familiar with it, is just one of the best programs in the city, employing our youth and giving them valuable skills. Sal and the team there always put on a good event down there, so I would welcome you all to come down to Boynton Yards to the folks who were there before it was cool. Groundwork Somerville, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Scott. Those items are approved.
Item 9.42 is a public communication from Carol Rigo submitting comments regarding rent stabilization.
That item is placed on file.
Item 9.43 is a public communication from Catherine Kaufman submitting comments regarding the Armory Building.
That item is placed on file.
Item 9.44 is a public communication from Chris Dwan submitting comments regarding the city lawsuit against Newport Construction for improper removal of trees on Beacon Street.
Is there any item in committee, colleagues know, related to this still? There have been over the years. Is there a committee this could go to just for a little bit of discussion?
Mr. Chair, traditionally, we actually did a lot of that work in Public Utilities, Public Works, but Open Space would also be a fine place to do the work. At the time, because it was part of a major streetscape, set of contracts, that's where it was, but I believe all the items have been discharged or lapsed.
Okay, thank you. Let's refer this to Open Space. Place on file with a copy to Open Space.
And item 9.45 is a public communication from 18 residents submitting comments regarding item 23-1162, a resolution regarding the Idaho Stop.
All in support. Excellent. That item is placed on file.
That brings us to...
Let's give a copy of that to Traffic and Parking, sorry.
And that brings us to item 10.1, an order by councillor Wilson, that the Director of Mobility work with relevant departments and divisions to install wayfinding signage on the community pass, including freeway exit-style signage on the community path extension, given that segment's limited access.
Councillor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. This order had its roots in a couple of recent rides I took on the Community Path Extension, where I was struck by just how much better we could make this new awesome path of ours with some just really basic wayfinding signage. Ensuring that community path users know what street they're exiting onto and the direction of popular destinations in that area would make a great thing even better. Path users encounter a number of forks, so there would be signage ideally indicating which fork they might want to take as they navigate that. And since the portion of the CPX between Walnut Street and Cambridge Commons pretty much functions like a freeway with really limited access, it would be great to see that marked with some freeway-style signage, just indicating, you know, what lies in wait for them if they take a certain exit. From our time with the CPX lease agreement in Finance, I recall we specifically granted permission to put up wayfinding signage on the MBTA's... on the path with the MBTA's prior approval, as long as we avoid any dreaded fouling activities, I believe is the term. So I'd like to see us start that process and make the CPX all it can be. I'd love to be a part of that discussion in committee about this, so I'm in Traffic and Parking, and I'd ask you send it there.
That item is referred to Traffic and Parking.
Item 10.2 is an order by councillors Wilson and Davis, that the Director of Mobility update this council on plans to expand bicycle parking in the city with a focus on Davis Square and Union Square, including potentially using intersection daylighting spaces for bike racks.
Councillor Wilson.
Thanks again, Mr. President. After my daughter and I took part in the awesome family bike rides mega CPX ride this past Saturday, we went off in search of some ramen for lunch, and we ended up in Davis Square. Knowing what we all hear about the incidence of bike theft around there, we were looking for a high-visibility, you know, high-traffic area to park our bikes, and we had a real tough time doing that. We made a full circle around the square, eventually did find a space, but it just in walking around there, we saw a number of incidents where, like, physical obstacles been put in place to basically force daylighting intersections, and it sort of... it made me wonder, could we do something similar with bike racks there? I mean, obviously, we don't want bikes to be blocking people's view. It defeats the entire purpose of daylighting, but maybe there's some solution here where we could install some bike racks around there, daylight while increasing bike parking capacity. So I guess I would ask this be sent to Traffic and Parking.
Councillor Davis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, and I thank you for councillor Wilson for reaching out to me about this one. I had been... This is an issue that I've been sort of thinking about a solution for as well, and I do like the idea of, in the spirit of throwing all options on the table, using that daylighting space, you know. The addition of bike lanes through some sections of Davis Square that took place last year following another tragic loss of one of our neighbors, not in Davis Square, as it happens in the case, you know, one of the supporting arguments, you know, further, much further down the list from keeping people from being in harm's way, is that bicycle traffic, we're told, is more likely to stop in a certain place and spend money at businesses. Again, not the primary reason. We want to keep cyclists safe, and so... But when, you know, when the safety measures have potentially negative effects on businesses in a neighborhood, and we've seen this in Ball Square, we've seen this in... and I'm sure my other ward colleagues can talk about as well, and hearing from business owners, you know, it does make it more difficult for someone who is used to using a car to pop into a place and stop, to pop into that business. And I hope that, long-term, that won't have a material negative impact on our business community, particularly those small businesses, but I worry that it is. I'm told that it is, at least anecdotally, by business owners. You know, the data for that, I'm also told there's some, you know, you can look at it both ways, but if nothing else, let's at least make it easy to have the philosophy or have the theory be put into practice if folks are... feel more comfortable using their bikes coming through our commercial squares, and, you know, particularly speaking as Ward 6 councillor in Davis Square. I know in Ball Square as well, and councillor Gomez-Mocad has had a lot of conversations with folks about this as well. Let's just make it as easy as possible to at least stop and pick up something on the way through for folks who are using bikes. This is... talk about low-hanging fruit. I mean, this is... all of the challenging things we talked about earlier tonight, this seems like it could be a very simple solution. And so I'm talking a lot more about it than it's probably worth, but it's like, it's such an easy thing, and I just want to emphasize that, like, if there's a way we can do this, I think it will ease a lot... eventually, you know, it'll help support the other arguments that we're making, long-term safety, reimagining the way we use public spaces, the way we use our roadways, and help support the business community. So hopefully, we can do something like this. Thank you.
You're here. I'd like to co-sponsor this and just say, as you all know, there are a number of kind of bike corrals around Union Square, and they are always full, and just... I live there, I see people regularly. They're full because people are shopping at those businesses. I mean, that's what's going on. So I totally support this, and I would add the High School to the list of a place that needs a lot more bike racks. Councillor Gomez-Mocad.
One, I want to support the High School, because hopefully, my daughter will be biking now to the High School now that the bike path is open. But I want to ask councillor Davis that we include Ball Square in there. It's a forgotten square. Please don't forget about it. You and I share borders there. I know that I go to Neighborhood Produce, and I'm always locking my bike in, like, on top of the bus stop, which is not very appropriate. So if you can also include it. We are getting a new rack from our new dispensary that's coming up there, but please put that in your radar screen.
Councillor Davis.
Yes, on that, so it's why I mentioned Ball Square in my comments, but fair point, the item itself actually does omit Ball Square. So I... if councillor Wilson's in agreement, I would... and to be honest, I mean, this should be true of all of our commercial squares, and we can put it the whole list in, but I will at least gladly accept a friendly amendment to include Ball Square.
As amended, that order is approved with a copy to Traffic and Parking.
And item 10.3 is an order by councillor Gomez-Mocad, that the Director of the Arts Council and the Director of Economic Development take the steps outlined within relative to the Armory Building.
Councillor Gomez-Mocad.
So the state... the items added within, I'm asking that the Directors of the Arts Council and Economic Development immediately engage the Arts at the Armory and other arts tenants in the planning process for the Armory Building and include them in the Master Plan Advisory Committee. I'm also asking them to provide this council with a list of participants in the Master Plan Advisory Committee and the selection process for those participants, and explain why three of the five operating models listed in the master plan were not considered and how this decision came about. As you very... many of you know, and I want to thank all the councillors who were able to attend the presentation on the Arts Council and their perspective on the master planning process. There was a meeting last week on this item, and I want to remind, I was looking back to a little history on here, when the city took via eminent domain the Armory Building in May 2021. At the time, the then-mayor, Kiro Tetonen, said that this was a chance for us, Somerville, to make a tangible investment in a permanent public space for arts activities. And if we look at Create Today, who was the consultant, they said, "We believe planning starts with listening and giving a voice to staff, civic leaders, artists, and others who are invested in your success." And the goal is to process project is to create a plan for the Armory that could best be informed by internal and external engagement through participation, leadership, interviews, and external research that examines best practice in organizations who are engaging in activities of interest to the city. So my first request is that we engage the arts tenants who are here at the meeting the other night. I think they were extremely well-informed. They gave great ideas, and I believe in... there's nothing better than engaging the users of a building to tell you how to best use it. They're already there. So... and I've been in this committee for quite a while, and let me track my words again. I also... many people were like, "Who is in this committee?" And I'm trying to look through the website, and it's not listing who's there, so I ask that they be immediately listed, and an explanation of the selection process, because it doesn't... there's a real question of transparency, and that's taking a lot of trust away from the city. And also, it's a little bit daunting why we selected three of the five operating models that were presented to us. I was in May, there were five models there. I know one of the models I wasn't a big advocate about for, and that was the one where the city kind of took control of the entire building. I just don't think it's in our best capacity. I also want to explain that I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus here, but the importance of engaging the tenants who are already there is because they... one of the things we're trying to do something in here is something the city is not highly skilled at, and that is, we take a school building that we are very familiar with the programming of it. We take a fire station. These are very basic programs. We're trying to reinvent a building or try to figure out what the best use is for a building for a use that we're not... it's not our bread and butter. It's the bread and butter for the artists who often... and I believe they truly, they've used a building, and they know how to do it. One of the... for acoustic strings, for example, saying, you know, "We're always in scarcity for space to give lessons." Some of the other acoustics-related arts businesses also said, "We don't have performance spaces." And we're already using the performance space there right now. The users, the Arts at the Armory know, so I think it's important to engage everyone and be very inclusive. So I don't know what committee this would go to, so... or we want to have a report come on these items directly to council. I don't know how we want to do this.
In the past, we've discussed armory-related items in Housing and Community Development. Is that suitable? Yeah. All right, and councillor, did you have additional comments on the next two items? Or do you want to take these all up together and send them to Howard?
Yeah, if you can just read the next two, and I'll take them on. I just have to... sorry, there's a lot hidden in them, and I have to find what's hidden in them.
Item 10.4 is an order by councillor Gomez-Mocad, that the Director of Economic Development take the steps described within relative to the Armory Building. And item 10.5 is a resolution by councillor Gomez-Mocad, that the administration report to this council on the usage of the Armory Building by existing tenants, city tenants, and what have been the vacancies.
So there has been... I'm going to read my items here, and then I'll explain myself. And they say that the Director of Economic Development provide an inventory of spaces and the potential use for those spaces and their armory as part of the Armory Master Plan process, that they immediately renew all existing use and occupancy agreements for Armory that have expired and extend them for an additional 24 months. The next one is that they present to this council an interim occupancy model for the Armory by October 2023. And finally, that... almost there, sorry. That's not the final. Provide the list of tenants in the Armory Building and any use and occupancy fees charged and paid per month on a... per agreed duration by those tenants from June 2021 through August 2023, and explain the increase in use and occupancy fees for Armory tenants starting in June 2021. So there's been a lot of... the first piece is, we had a building that had a series of tenants. Some have left, some have come. I want to understand who has left, who's there, who's not there, how are we currently using the space? The city sometimes is using the space, we're not charging rent. I want to understand what are the fees we've been collecting, because there's going to be a discussion about what is the financial model here, and we are sitting on a building, and that's why I'm asking for an interim occupancy model. We have some empty spaces there, and there are artists who want in desperate need of space. We had a BIPOC space. I don't know how well or not that space is being used. So I just want to kind of get a whole x-ray here, a whole assessment of how are we using the space? How much are we charging? Why did we decide to increase? It was a surprise to me that Arts at the Armory had a... well, I sort of knew this, but I was reminded that their fees were increased. And then finally, we have been in a planning process, and November 2021 was when we got the proposal from the consultant. We didn't meet until, if I have, I believe it was June 2022. We've had a lot of time lag, and when I first started, I was told, "We're going to do this in six months." I disagreed with the then-economic development director. I said, "You're not going to figure this out." I begged, like, "Let's not let tenants go, because we don't know what the financial model is. We might need to have some tenants who can pay a good rent to be able to subsidize others, for example." So I think we haven't figured this out. We're struggling with it, and I think this piecemeal, I'll renew it the next six months, two months, is very disruptive. I really think we need to give them at least two years, 24 months, with a caveat, I think that they get a notice of any changes six months ahead. I think this... it's unacceptable, these little piecemeal renewals that we do for use and occupancy agreements. So that's my take on this. There's a lot going in there, and again, for all the councillors who stepped in, I really appreciate your support on this. And I believe the last order... I can't follow. My apologies. Again, I want documentation of who's occupying and what. I mean, we need a full transparency on this. And finally, it's the question of, like, how much empty space were there? We all have, like, questions. We all have... everybody is constantly saying, "I want this," and I'm going to win councillor Strezzo's 120th Center. I'm like, "I don't know where, you know, where is that space coming from?" We have the homeless situation that we've talked about, you know. We have empty spaces anywhere around here. Shame on us, because I think there's a lot of uses out there. I know it's hard to program. And that's it. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Burnley, did I say you wanted to sign on to this? Yeah, councillor Burnley would like to sign on, as would I. I'll just add, thank you very much, councillor. Councillor Strezzo would like to sign on. So when the council voted to take the Armory by eminent domain, the purpose was to protect what is so wonderful inside the Armory, and it has been a long and, I think, very rough road for those tenants, and the pandemic certainly did not do anybody any favors. But we are clearly now at a point in the city's process to figure out the long-term stable future of that building, where they are seeking input. are seeking input. The current tenants, including the Armory, are very loudly and eloquently, and in my opinion, correctly advocating for what they would like to see. Many of us were at a public meeting that they held last week. I know that they will, at some point very soon, be submitting a petition outlining how they think that the city might be addressed, might best address this. So I'm very thankful that we're now at a point where we can have this conversation in public, and I feel optimistic that we can do right by Arts at the Armory and all the other important tenants in the Armory, and give them a long-term home. You know, I'll just say, personally, my wife and I, our first date was at a concert at the Armory, so that is something that is very personal to me, and I just know, as everyone does here, you know, just what an absolute gem that is in our community. So those items are referred to Housing and Community Development.
And the next item is item 10.12, a request of the mayor requesting confirmation of the appointment of Jennifer Solis to the condominium review board.
That's referred to Confirmation of Appointments.
Item 10.14 is the Council on Aging applying for a public event license for Mayor Valentine's Senior Picnic on September 14th.
That item is approved. Counselor Burnley. That item is approved.
Item 10.15 is a public communication from--
Waive the reading of this and 16, and refer them to Land Use with a copy to the Planning Board.
And item 10.17 is a public communication from Jeffrey Mastiak submitting comments regarding cleaning up Somerville.
That item is placed on file.
And that brings us to the end of the agenda for the evening, Mr. President.
Are there any late items?
Question. I do not see any late items before the council.
Excellent. With no further business before the council, we are adjourned. Thank you all.